Hello, everyone. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. This is a great attendance. We're so excited that you came. Thank you to the candidates. The League very strongly believes that in order to promote democracy is very important that our candidates make themselves available to answer your questions. And so, thank you so much to all of them for being here. We want to thank TC Media. They have been our partners for decades now producing these forums. So, thank you to Thurston Community Media. And the NAACP of Thurston County has also sponsored us this evening. So, thank you to them as well. I just want to talk a little bit about how the questions will work. Some of you who have been to our forums before have figured it out. But we have people with note cards that are around. So, if you want to ask a question and you need a note card, just raise your hand. You're welcome to submit questions throughout the program. If you are done writing a question, just raise your hand with the note card and one of my greeters will come and grab it. The questions will then go to our question team over here. And the only thing they're going to be doing is they're going to be consolidating it and just making sure that the questions follow the guidelines that I'm now going to explain to you. So, we want to make sure that all the questions are relevant to the office. So, this is Olympia City Council. So, please don't ask questions that are more relevant to maybe the Olympia School Board or the county commission. Make sure that your questions are relevant to Olympia City Council. We ask that you try to make them as simple as possible. So, like maybe one sentence and that just helps facilitate the conversation. We also ask that they be neutrally worded and that they be directed toward all the candidates. So, you can, please do not single out or single out one of the candidates. If you do, we will not ask the questions. At this time, as Zach already asked, please silence your cell phones so that we don't have interruptions. We also ask that you hold all applause until the end of the program so that we can get through as many questions as possible. The candidates have all received ground rules for how this forum will go. We are very, we are stressing that stability is very important. So, any personal attacks will not be allowed. And the candidates will be talking to you and will not be addressing their opponents. I think that is all I need. Oh, the other thing. At this forum, the audience isn't really able to see our timer, but we do have a timer over here. The candidates and the moderator can see it. Candidates, it will turn yellow when you have 15 seconds left and say stop when you are done. You are free to very quickly finish your sentence, but if you continue to talk, my moderator will politely interrupt you. My moderator this evening is Karen Valenzuela, and we are very thankful that she's here moderating. And she will go ahead and introduce the candidates. And then, we have Ruth Dills, who is our timer. So, thank you so much to both of them. Go ahead, Karen.
So, tonight, we are joined by City Council member Clark Gilman, running for reelection to position four. His opponent, Wendy Carlson, wasn't able to join us this evening. So, I will read a written statement she provided at the end of the program. Next to Clark is Justin Stang and Robert Vanderpoel, running for District Six, and Paul Barrent and Caleb Geiger, running for the soon-to-be-vacated position seven. According to the council handbook by the city of Olympia, members of the Olympia City Council are collectively responsible for establishing policy, adopting an annual budget, providing vision and goals, and hiring and supervising the city manager, the police auditor, and the hearing examiner. So, once again, as we turn to the questions, please hold your applause until the end of the forum. So, we'll start off this evening by asking each candidate why they are running for City Council and what their goals and priorities are. Let's start with Clark.
And is it 60 seconds?
60 seconds.
60 seconds. I am Clark Gilman, and I would be honored to continue to represent you on Olympia City Council. I bring balanced, bold, and pragmatic leadership to our city. I love this place, and I've been really proud and continue to be excited to serve on bodies like our Finance Committee right now, helping lead our budget process. I've served on intercity transit. I've served on the Regional Planning Council. I had a spell of chairing our Land Use and Environment Committee. And in each of those, I feel like I worked to hold the door of City Hall open to more people and more voices and make sure that more folks in town are considered. So, I would be honored to have your support, to have you shout me out, and to have your vote. Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you for having me. My name is Justin Stang. I'm running for position six. I am a longtime Olympia resident. I've been here 14 years. Started as a renter downtown with my wife. We now live on the west side in a home that we own. And I started at the, as a local musician, and then at the YMCA. And I now make my career in the shellfish industry. I worked for 10 years for the Hamahama Company. And now, I am an environmental policy analyst for the Pacific Coast Shellfish Growers Association. I'm truly running today because I believe in this community, and I believe that when we work together, we can really accomplish quite a bit. So, when I was at the Y or in the shellfish industry, I've always worked to build something better for the people around me. And I have experience in collaboration, longstanding commitment to workers and local jobs, and of course, to the environment, and a belief that our best solutions come from listening to one another and working together. So, I'd be honored to earn your support. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Vanderpoel. For the last year and a half, I've been on the City Council. I was appointed when the mayor moved over to the mayor's seat. Over this last year and a half, I've worked on a lot of land use work. I've done a lot of work with the environment and a lot of inner-local work. You know, the thing that I love about this city is that this is the place that I've decided to put my roots in, right with my family. I feel welcomed here. I love the people that I work with. I love the challenges that are in front of us. And I also believe that local government could be a source of hope in times when people don't feel very hopeful, right? I believe that local government can work on things and try even piloting things to see what we can do together to meet our goals. I would love your vote, and I would love to talk with you anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Paul Barrent. I have lived in Olympia for 42 years, and I'm running for position number seven. And I'd like to thank the League for pulling this forum together. My inspiration for running, frankly, was to defend our democracy in these times. I have to say, Trumpism disturbed me a great deal. And so, I decided that I could make a contribution by running for the Olympia City Council to defend our community values. I want to bring the council to the people. In our deliberations, I have doorbilled in my campaign 7,700 households. I want to bring the council to the people. Some of the issues I want to address are homelessness. I want to be a very strong parks advocate, and I want to work on affordability for our citizens. Thank you.
My name is Caleb Geiger. I'm running for Olympia City Council because when I was born, my mom was a union member. She worked at Safeway. And with that job, she supported a family of five. My dad was a stay-at-home dad for the first couple of years of our lives. We later moved, and when we moved, my mom no longer had that job. My dad took over being the breadwinner. But by the time I was a teenager, I was helping my family deliver newspapers to make ends meet. Affordability in our region has not improved, and I see that there are so many people in our community that are struggling to make ends meet because the cost of rent is too high, the cost of housing is too high for those on fixed incomes, and wages have not kept up with that. So, that's one of my number-one priorities to address in the city, in addition to, yes, keeping members of our community safe. In the Pacific Northwest, in Olympia, we know that our neighbors belong, and it is our duty to stand shoulder to shoulder with them because we are a city that is built on compassion, on creativity, and on unity. That's why I'm running.
Thank you. One of our first questions from the audience is, and we'll begin this time with you, Justin. What is your vision for a thriving downtown?
I'm really glad that you brought that question to us. Thank you for the question. For me, I've lived, when I first moved to Olympia, I lived downtown for five years. My apartment actually was just practically across the street here on Legion Way. And for me, a thriving downtown is perhaps the way that you could envision arts walk or procession, but more regularly. You've got cafes and restaurants, nightlife that's bustling, a live music scene, plenty of art, performance art, and a generally welcoming space for everybody. That's also a place that we can call home and get out and walk and frequent local businesses and shops. To me, it's a space where all are welcome and enjoying the best that our city has to offer. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, when I think of the future of the downtown, when I think of where we should be going, I think of, you know, the affordability crisis in a lot of ways. Can we make downtown a place where it's not just rentals, but there's homeownership, right? That we can actually build condominiums for different income levels, right? I think of accessibility. I think about the fact that a lot of downtown, we just did a walk audit on Saturday, and we found so many parts of the city is inaccessible to folks because the sidewalks are lifted in certain spots, traffic goes too fast in certain places. That's what I think of that. I also think of it as a self-thriving place. It is the economic center of the county and the city. How do we ensure that businesses can thrive off of a population that lives there, right? So that it's kind of its own ecosystem economically.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. I believe that the city needs to make investments in downtown. It's right on the verge of really busting loose to being something really spectacular, I believe. So many people want to come to our downtown and experience our market and our waterfront and our restaurants and our capital. And with a little more investment, we can take it to the next level. And the things that I'm thinking of are in terms of accentuating our three marvelous theaters. We have three great theaters. We, if we could have a theater district, it would really bring new life to that part of the town. I believe that we need to continue our walking patrols of downtown. It's on the upswing, but we need to make sure that everyone feels safe and welcome in downtown. And I think we can do that by increasing the walking patrols, which have recently been cut back by the police department, and our clean teams. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, when I think of a vision for downtown, it's really not that different than a vision of anywhere else in the city. I think of a city that is built for people. So, I think about the design of our city in terms of getting away from car-centricity that we have. You know, the way that we design our roads for cars instead of people. We've had four pedestrians killed in the city this year through interactions between pedestrians and cars. That is four too many. So, the way that we design our roads for people and bikes so that people can bike, roll, and walk in our city, helping our small businesses who are increasingly struggling, particularly with high commercial rents, so thinking about things that can help alleviate some of that, you know, such as vacancy tax or redistribution of business and occupations taxes that affect our small businesses. And then, yes, I do also think about investments into what people might, you know, traditionally call public safety. And that envisions that we have, you know, members of our community, the public resource officers essentially, that are like our crisis response team, that are able to walk the streets, you know, that are able to engage with residents.
Thank you.
This is Clark for the folks in the back. So, I am so proud that Olympia is the living room for like a five-county region. We're the place people come to go out to eat. They're the place they come to the farmer's market, the place they come for theaters and live music. And I, so I first started walking, eating, playing, shopping downtown in 1981. And from, in my experience, there have never been more shops, more restaurants, more people living downtown. I think it's the busiest and most alive it's been in my lifetime. And I'm, so I'm glad for that. And I acknowledge that we want to keep working to make it cleaner, safer. We want to continue the social workers on the street to help the folks who are in crisis. And we want to keep boosting the local businesses. But I'm pretty darn proud of downtown, just as it is right now, and I love being downtown.
Thank you. Our next question is about homelessness. What actions and what short and long-term goals would you have for dealing with the jungle, the newest encampment between the auto mall and 101, et cetera, et cetera? And we'll start with you first, Robert.
Yeah, so, I've had the privilege of being the alternative council member to the Regional Housing Council. I believe that we've done a lot of good work over the last few years, but I believe that we're very limited and capped by the state, right? We asked for $9 million. We got $5 million this year, right? We're at this point where we've been doing a lot of preventative work, and I believe that work has been successful in a lot of ways. But I also believe we need to move towards preventative measures. How can we keep people from falling into homelessness? How can we provide services to folks that are in need in the community, right? We have funds coming in from the Opioid Abatement Council that will help us with folks that are dealing with harder situations. But I ultimately believe things like a public developer locally can help fund a lot of those gaps, right? How can we build housing and sell it to working-class people who can't afford it?
Thank you. Homelessness and talking about it is a centerpiece of my campaign. I believe that one of the things we can do to reduce homelessness and homeless people living in camps is to establish two more tiny home villages and with city support. I support the tiny homes because they've really worked at lifting people out of homelessness. Let's invest in what works. I am a housing-first person. I believe in housing first. I also believe that behavioral health is a centerpiece of fixing our homeless problems, and we need to kind of reimagine the best way of delivering these services. In many ways, our challenge is about to get worse. The big bill that was passed in Congress cut mental health and addiction services. So, we have got to live up to that challenge, and I'm willing to do it. Thank you.
And when we talk about homelessness, it's important to understand, you know, those root causes of homelessness. And study after study shows that the number-one factor contributing to homelessness is affordability. And that's exactly what I talked about at the beginning with, we have increasingly high housing costs, whether you're a first-time homebuyer or somebody who's trying to afford the home that they're currently in, or whether you're like me, a renter, who after taxes is part of the 25% of Olympians who spend more than 30% of their income on rent. So, unless we address affordability, and as Robert mentioned, stopping folks from falling into homelessness in the first place, you know, the way that we do that is we lower the cost of housing and the cost of rent. I believe that we should start a pilot project with the Thurston Regional Housing Council, start regionally to build housing ourselves as a public developer. But we also need to raise wages in the city. I'm a supporter of the Workers' Bill of Rights because so many of our service industry workers are making below what they need to live in the city. And then, yes, expand social services, working regionally with our nonprofit partners like Interfaith Works and the tribes.
Well, I appreciate what Caleb was just saying, that first, we start with the reality that there are a lot of poor people in our community, that we keep minting more poor people, and that it's pretty difficult right now to access medical services, especially if you're poor. So, a lot of the work over the last decade that the city has led has been trying to create more avenues for people to get into emergency housing, then transitional housing, more social workers working alongside the police on the streets so that there's another way to steer people to services, and standing up in partnership with nonprofits, permanent supportive housing to be a longer-term transition for folks. And I know it's not a problem that we're going to solve by ourselves, but I know that we also want to continue to put as much energy and resources as we can muster to mitigating those impacts, both on the people who are in crisis and on the rest of us who are alongside them in our town.
I really appreciate this question. Here in Washington State, we're currently a million housing units short of what the demand is. In Olympia, more specifically, right now, that number is 7,000 and growing. So, it's great that we have a lot of demand for housing here in our area, but the tricky part is that it's been difficult for us to keep up. It is certainly something that's a regional problem, and it's going to require partnerships and great relationships with Lacey, Tumwater, with Mason County, Gray's Harbor, Yelm, Ten I O. It's certainly something that's facing everybody currently. And I think first and foremost, it starts with the housing supply. I would support adding housing of all types at all income levels in order to give people lots of options and choices, whether their family is growing or whether they're retiring and downsizing. For the people that are currently unhoused, I think that we need more emergency shelter, particularly low-barrier shelters so that folks can get in from outside. And then, transitional housing with support and resources and more permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
I already went. I started.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Do you want to go second time?
I can. We can just keep going.
Now, we'll start with Paul. Can you address the complications of being a sanctuary city in the current climate?
Well, thank you. This is, I don't think any of us ever quite envisioned we would be in the situation we are with the hostility from our federal government. I am very proud of Olympia being a sanctuary city for many classifications of people, top the list being the immigrant community, the LGBTQ+ community, we're a pro-choice sanctuary city. All of these are just absolutely critical, and it is essential we defend our community values. We need to find allied organizations to defend these, the status in the courts. We need to pass additional ordinances to reaffirm each of these areas. And we need to be aggressive in confronting federal infringement at every step of the way.
I mentioned at the beginning that I was born here in the Pacific Northwest, and I have always known the Pacific Northwest as a community. And this is particularly true of Olympia, a community where people can come, and they often do, to explore who they are and to be who they are, to be their best selves. And so, I don't, I don't look at us having much of a choice, but to stand with our neighbors, there is nothing new in history. This is the same tired repetition that we have seen time and time again. It is the singling out of traditionally oppressed communities for political benefit of those in power. That is not who Olympia is. Olympia, like I said, is a city that stands with its neighbors, right? So, when we have a federal government who is threatening our cities, our intercity system, our counties, when we stand together, and we've seen this be successful time and time again, when cities and counties stand with the state together to sue the federal government, we successfully defend laws because they are perfectly legal, and that is how we stand up for our neighbors.
All right. Fun fact, the Olympia City Council first passed a resolution in 1985 declaring Olympia a city of peace and a sanctuary from political persecution. And we've continued to build on that over the years. There's two main protections I see that this offers. The first is it's a promise from the city that for our own services and the way that we offer services and treat people, we won't differentiate. We won't other people based on any sort of protected class or any effort from another level of government to persecute folks. We've recently reaffirmed the immigrant sanctuary. When Roe v. Wade was repealed in 2022, we added a sanctuary for people seeking reproductive health care. And most recently, we added an LGBTQIA2S+ sanctuary onto that list to strengthen this language.
One of the reasons why I fell in love with Olympia in the first place is that it's a welcoming city to all of its residents, to the people that come here. We allow people to be who they are, and we welcome them with open arms. I think it's incumbent upon the city and the City Council to protect those people. And one of the things that concerns me is that here in Olympia, we have a flock camera system, an automated license plate reading system. And currently, the data that's being collected by those cameras here at various traffic intersections is stored on the cloud and not necessarily owned or protected by the city of Olympia. At this stage, the federal government has proven that they aren't a trustworthy partner. And so, when the federal government is looking for folks that aren't fitting into their immigration narrative or their reproductive rights narrative or any of the other narratives that they choose per that day, they have the opportunity to look into what it is that we're doing here and where people are moving about, and there's a potential for abuse. Thank you.
Yeah, so, in the time that I've been on council, one of the things I'm proud to have worked on and the referral on is the LGBTQIA2S+ status, sanctuary status. That was one of the things I'm glad we did. But beyond that, I believe what we should be doing as a city is we should be codifying protections, protections that are being eliminated at the federal level. For example, I believe that we should continue to work on, like the Workers' Bill of Rights, for example, ensuring that, it was brought up last night at council by a couple of public commenters, that a lot of our immigrant workers, their working wages that are below the minimum, right? By codifying protections for these folks, they have more stability in their lives, right? That's just an example of something we can do. Recently, we were asked on intercity transit to essentially sign a letter accepting the federal rules, which would essentially dismantle all of our, all of our work around climate inequity. And we've joined a lawsuit against them because we have to continue to protect people in our community.
I have this first.
So, Proposition 1, what's your position?
Yeah, Proposition 1 is a necessity for the workers in our community. You're going to hear a theme from me.
I'm going to tell you what Proposition 1 is.
Proposition 1 is the Workers' Bill of Rights. It is a tier, it has a couple of things in it. It's a tiered implementation of the raising of the minimum wage in the city, starting with large businesses at $20 an hour, and then medium and small businesses tiered in over the next six years. It is crucial for those in our community who struggle to afford rent, who struggle to afford health insurance, who struggle to afford groceries every month, every week. So, you know, I unequivocally support this measure. It also asks our large businesses to do what is right and allow workers to plan their lives with dignity by requiring that schedules be published within two weeks, right? Again, that requirement is only for large businesses. And if large businesses fail to do that, this, you know, these are businesses like Burger King, McDonald's, Safeway-Kroger, companies that have made record profit in the city. They can afford to schedule their workers out two weeks in advance to allow them to live with dignity and pay them a wage that also allows them to live with dignity. I support that measure.
Since Caleb so generously used his minute to describe the resolution, I'm going to tell you why I'm so passionately in support of it. I'm a working-class guy from a working-class family, living in a working-class neighborhood. I've worked for low hourly wages, and I've worked for union wages. That's been my world. And I am really proud that thousands of people in our town signed on to a petition calling for respect for hourly-wage workers. We're at a point where we're about 55% renters in our town, a majority of renters. We have about a third of our folks who are just making it month to month. And this set of protections is a modest measure, in my mind, a modest measure that will bring some more stability to those working folks and some respect and allow them to live a more dignified life.
So, I, when I started here in Olympia, I worked at a minimum-wage job. I've had a lot of low-paying jobs. And then, I spent the last 10 years at the Hamahama Company advocating for workers and trying to make the best work environment possible. When I think about policy, and this policy in particular, two things come to mind. The first and the foremost is that any time you're making policy, it's important to have everybody that's affected by that policy get an opportunity to weigh in as to how that policy will affect them. As I read through the details of this proposal, I have more and more questions about what will happen with substitute teachers, what will happen with our utilities, what will happen with first responders or people in the healthcare industry. Our nonprofits and our small businesses have asked time and time again to have a seat at the table and be included in the process for how this goes into effect. The second part is with regard to the city budget. And right now, I just don't see a pathway for us to be able to afford staff to implement or enforce this policy. or enforce this policy.
I support the Workers' Bill of Rights. I've come from a union background. I have union members in my family. I mean, my great-grandfather was a coal miner in West Virginia. It's, you know, it is a part of who I am. I see the fact that we're trying to be an equitable society, an inclusive society, and it's hard to be that if people can't afford to participate, right? When all of their resources go towards their rent or towards their childcare or towards their transportation, you know, we, you know, we have to ensure that everyone in our community can participate. And so for me, I, I've supported the Workers' Bill of Rights and I continue to support the Workers' Bill of Rights. I would say that, you know, I think about the fact that there are so many, beyond the minimum wage, I would even say, folks that work in the hospital system, they don't usually get a fixed schedule, right? But they work for a big corporation, right? I think of the fact that we have so many members of our community who would benefit greatly from this and it would help them have stability in a time where there isn't much.
Thank you. I'm, I support the raise in the minimum wage and the Workers' Bill of Rights. And I came to this decision because frankly, there are just a lot of people struggling in our community. About a third of our community is really struggling to get by financially. We have seen increases in the rent. We have seen vegetable prices go up 40% this summer. We've seen, the tariffs are now kicking in. I just see over and over this, this financial stress that is going on, and this is just something that is actually kind of a modest step forward in addressing this issue. And I think we always have to remember that, that people are struggling in our community and we need to step forward to do whatever we can. And it, you know, a little more money oftentimes reduces homelessness, too.
All right. Now we're back at the beginning. Clark, what one practical idea can you talk about to make Olympia a more affordable city?
The, I, I think that the most important practical step that we take to make Olympia more affordable is trying to support and stabilize existing apartment complexes. That we chase trying to build new units. We, we hope that there'll be a million little cute backyard cottages being built in your backyards. But the practical reality is if we help, continue to help with weatherizing, with bringing sewer to apartments that have septic, to concrete steps to make sure that those stay the most affordable units in town, I think that's practically the, the most impactful action that we can take.
I think as we talk about affordability here in Olympia, there are a lot of external pressures and things that we need to be cognizant of. Childcare is exceptionally expensive. If you have two children under school age, you can pay upwards of $41,000 a year for that childcare. Insurance premiums have gone up and will continue to go up. Taxes are another way that people on fixed incomes in particular really struggle with being able to, to ratchet the way up in order to cover a lot of these things. And so I think from the city council standpoint, it's really important to be mindful when we're discussing something regressive like a sales tax increase or whether we're going to increase the BNO tax. County, at the county level, property taxes are going to go up. And I think, I think it's important when we're allocating resources and when we're thinking about what it is that we're going to pay for and how we're going to pay for it, the most practical thing we can do is to honor the taxpayers' wishes and fund what they ask for without necessarily going above and beyond to, to spend frivolously.
I'm going to start by coming, talking about an example of a policy I'm currently working on. I'm currently working on with the school district, a pilot around childcare. Right now, we have a grant that we're working with first to do a study to find where the desert is in the city, where are the places and what are the income levels of folks in the community that can't have childcare because there is a childcare cliff, essentially. You have people who can afford it and you have people who can't afford it, right? And there's a, there's a huge ravine between the two. And so the idea here is to do a study, do a pilot, use one of our schools, work with the schools on between, the funding between the city and the school and the state grant to try to do a mixed-income pilot in one of our schools so that folks in our community have childcare, can, can live their lives in a way that they don't have to worry about whether or not one parent has to quit their job in order to live their life.
I have three ideas for increasing affordability. One is we need to do an assessment of all the public properties in the city that would be available for development for low-income housing. And then do the hard work of rolling up our sleeves and cobbling together the money to build low-income housing on those properties. My second idea is to maintain our free transit that we have. We have a wonderful amenity in this city. We provide free transit on our buses for our citizens. This is, this is a unique thing in, in all of the state of Washington, free transit. We need to maintain that. And finally, I want to establish 100 more pea patch gardens. A smaller item, but pea patch gardens can be used both by individuals to grow vegetables at a lower income, at a lower cost, and they can be used by public groups to grow food for the food banks.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of great ideas, you know, at the table. Everything from the city being able to use existing right-of-way to invest in public housing and to work regionally in order to, as a South Sound region, build affordable housing. But as Clark had kind of mentioned, I spent most of my time about the Workers' Bill of Rights, just talking about what the Workers' Bill of Rights is. And I want to go back to that because, you know, if we're talking about one of the single most practical ways that we could make the city more affordable, it is a citizens' ballot initiative that we, the people, have the power to pass. So a little bit more about that is that, you know, this, this piece of legislation came from a union that has decades and decades and decades of experience representing grocery workers, representing healthcare workers. They did do community, they did do community engagement, engaging with local nonprofits, with religious organizations, with current members of the city council and constituents throughout the city in order to understand and provide input for it. And it is based on research because time and time again, we see that raising wages results in an economic growth. It has always been that case in this country.
Now, Justin, you're first. What do you think is the biggest issue facing the city of Olympia and how do you propose to solve it?
The biggest issue and how I'm going to solve it in one minute. You all are, you all are, are good. Give me one second. I think it's, it's not the most popular thing to talk about, but I think the fundamental basis by which everything else happens here in Olympia is our city budget. Right now, for the second consecutive year, we're, we're dealing with a budget shortfall that is significant. And the, the current way out of that looks like increased taxes and cuts simultaneously. And I think without, without long-term financial stability and planning to the city budget here in Olympia, it's going to be awfully difficult to really honor the, the precious resources and to, to allocate those resources appropriately to really get the residents of our city what it is that they're asking for. A lot of that's, you know, in our first responders, in our, in our garbage collection, in things that make us a basic municipality. And so I think long-term financial stability for the city of Olympia budget is definitely one of the top, top issues I'm, I'm seeing.
I think the biggest issue is the issue that we've been talking about for well over a decade, and that's the housing and homeless crisis. I mean, we have gotten to the point where Habitat for Humanity is building housing for people that aren't very low-income, people working on minimum wage anymore. It's folks that are state workers and work for the hospital system, right? And so that shows that we're, you know, in a point where we're not building the right type of housing for the right type of situation that we're in, right? I brought up the fact that we should consider being a public developer because that's something that we can do as a city because other cities are trying it right now. I know Seattle is currently trying it. I know the fact, the matter is, the market on its own isn't going to get us out of there. Housing, new housing being constructed now is $500,000, right? There are seniors who live in homes that would like to downsize, but there's no other option, right? These are things that we can achieve if we actually started building, taking out bonds and building housing at the cost of construction.
Thank you. I, I believe the biggest issue is homelessness. It's the one that I talk about the most on the campaign trail. As I'd mentioned before, I believe that we can put a big dent into homelessness in the state of Olympia by building two tiny home villages. But we also need to kind of relook at our delivery of behavioral health services. Olympia doesn't have a detox center. We should have a detox center, counseling services, transitional housing, and mental health beds, all under one roof, to provide service for people and really lift them up out of the quagmire they're in as homeless individuals. And I am just very committed to working very diligently on that and, and dealing with these problems as they come because it's, the, the problems are changing because of the Trump administration and the cuts that we see in the big bill.
Well, I don't think it's going to be anyone surprised when I say the biggest issue facing Olympians is, you know, to quote a phrase that Robert uses, the issue that we've been talking about nearly all night, which is, again, affordability. It's the paycheck that each one of us is getting for those of us, you know, who are particularly, you know, on fixed income in our, in our service, uh, service industry. I've already talked about raising the wage, so I'm not going to talk anymore about that. But certainly about building housing in this city. The market, the private market right now is what got us here because our housing is currently fueled by a for-profit industry. Until we break away from a for-profit industry and we take control ourselves and we build the housing, we're not going to be able to fix that. We also have to address the elephant in the room, which is Washington's regressive tax code. Again, until we fix the fact that you and I are paying more than the rich corporations like Boeing, like Amazon, like Redfin, we are not going to be able to change the system fundamentally in the way that we need to.
For me, the issues of affordability for, for housing, homelessness, all that is not unique to Olympia. It's not even unique to the United States right now. So the question is, what do we do here, right? And, and I think that first, the biggest issue we wrestle with is that we are a growing city. And we've got a lot of tensions around how do 10,000 more people in 4,000 more housing units fit in and are they going to mess up our backyards, right? That's, so we, we spend a lot of time and energy about how to manage big city opportunities and big city challenges as, as we grow. And I, I think the budget is a reflection of those changing priorities as we take on responsibilities that the federal and state government aren't doing. And that's why we have the social work, the affordable housing, the climate work, which I still think are super important to include in the budget, but they're, they're responsibilities that were handed to us.
So, Robert, as federal funding cuts strain local programs that many residents depend on, what specific actions or policies would you advocate for at the city level to bolster neighborhood-based efforts that build community resilience to fill these gaps?
I'm glad you asked that question. I've, you know, it's funny, I've had a few people come to me about this that have an understanding of where we are with our budget, have an understanding of where we are with the state and the federal government. And to be honest, one of the conversations that I'm trying to think about over the next year is how do we, how do we use our staff in a way that we work volunteering with the public, right? We are at a point where the public are, the city of Olympia, Olympians have demands on what, where we need to go, right? But we physically do not have enough staff and we physically, and we don't have enough budget. How do we do that? So to me, I think exploring ways for us to volunteer, ways for us to bring in the community. I mean, for example, right, we're going to be looking, we're going to be looking at our neighborhoods. How do we, how do we work with our neighbors and our neighborhoods to do projects that improve those neighborhoods, right? How do we do sidewalk work while talking to the folks that are there? How do we do, do we do it on a Saturday? Do we come out and work together, right? These are, these are ideas that we have to do.
Thank you. You know, this is, this, Trumpism is coming at us in 100 different ways. And so we are going to be struggling with these issues for years to come. What is immediately before us is serious cuts to mental health and addiction services that are used heavily by the community. What is immediately before us is food, food shortages caused by decreases in SNAP. And we will also see huge cuts of, of healthcare. The state of Washington will step up on healthcare and Medicaid reimbursement. I think that one thing we need to do in the community is step up on food availability by growing more food here locally. That's something we can do and looking at new, uh, new methods of delivering food through bulk purchases and whatnot for the community.
I think something that is important to understand is that although we are seeing a radical reshaping of our government at the federal level, and that has resulted in historic, open cuts to the middle working class and the poor, this has been a system that has happened for decades and decades, right? This, in a sense, is, is nothing new. What I believe, so, so first and foremost, you know, it's like I talked about in my, in the last question, fixing Washington's regressive tax code so that we can generate the funds that we need to, to support our cities, to support a healthcare system, working regionally together with our nonprofit partners such as Interfaith Works, the Chehalis Tribe, which has recently stood up its own drug addiction and mental health resource clinic that it has also brought to Olympia for all Olympians to use. Working with our community partners as well. Robert, you mentioned, you know, community volunteers and understanding that we are all in this together, and unless we work together as a community with our neighbors, we're not going to get out of it.
So I'm going to try something out here. I'm thinking maybe the creator gave us the COVID-19 epidemic so we could practice for this administration. We did so much cool mutual aid and checking in on each other. And I, so I think there was two parts I heard in the question. One is that mutual aid question of would we be getting together to have gardens, to have a phone tree for a street, all that? And I, I think we already proved we can do that. And I also think that the path the city took during the pandemic makes sense, that we took whatever windfall we had of federal assistance and we put it to stabilizing childcare facilities, to investing in keeping small businesses open downtown. That was where we focused our, our energy was let's, let's keep, let's keep the place open, right? While we're weathering this. And I'll just, I'll close with, in that budget question, the last question, it's funny that our, our effort for a sustainable budget is to make it five years, hoping that you all will help us to change the federal government in five years and we'll, we'll be back on track.
So Olympia is a community I truly believe in, and I do know that Olympians have a strong history of supporting one another, and I believe that we'll continue to support one another. I think it's important when the federal government and the state government aren't necessarily coming to, to rescue us, that means we're going to have to focus on what it is that we can control here in Olympia. And for me, that means being exceptionally smart and resourceful with our decision-making and remaining flexible, but also being creative. I think a lot of these problems are going to take a lot of energy, enthusiasm, and creativity. One of the ways I feel like we can really help from the council standpoint is to act as ambassadors and advocates at the state and federal level. When you go to the state legislature or to the congressional delegation and you say this is something that we desperately need, your weight as a city council member actually means something and can help move that conversation along. I also think, when appropriate, it's great to continue to support Nick Brown, our Attorney General, and our governor as they pursue legal options to deal with the Trump administration's overreach. Thank you.
All right. Paul, you're, you're next. How can we reduce our dependence on cars?
Well, the first thing we can do, I think, in, as a city, is maintain our free transit. And I alluded to this earlier, we have free transit. And I think the city needs to undertake an education effort to our citizens on what a wonderful wonderful benefit this is and how to use it more effectively in their daily lives. And so I would support a PR campaign to do that. I also think that making, Olympians have made great strides in being a walkable city and more people are walking since COVID. And so I want to build out the trail system for both bikes and walking throughout the city and make our downtown a very walkable, bikeable place as well.
Yeah, this is a big question because as I alluded to, or as I said at the beginning, we've had four pedestrians killed in the city just this summer alone. That's four too many. So what we need to do is continue to invest in transit. I remember when I had the opportunity to live in Germany, there was a viable transit system, and that meant that you could never more than a five-minute walk or roll away from a bus stop, and the bus came every five to 10 minutes. It made a viable option so that you could actually live your life. But in addition to that, we have to redesign and rethink our city. Part of that comes through zoning reforms that allows mixed commercial in neighborhoods so you have a coffee shop, a small grocery store, a pub in your neighborhood so you don't have to get into a car. I live downtown, which means I live right in between two Fred Meyers, one in Lacey, one in Tumwater. So I have to get on an interstate anytime I want to go get groceries. If we rezone our city to allow to have those small commercials, those small grocery stores, it means less trips with our cars. It means we're more engaged in our community and our neighbors as we see them in our neighborhood.
So far, we have not reduced miles traveled or the number of cars, you know, more than a decade after putting the Sustainable Thurston Plan together. What I think we're doing now, that Caleb just began describing about trying to make it so there's more possibilities to do errands and make a trip that's walkable or easily bicyclable, I think is super important. The neighborhood center sort of notion, I'm working now with neighbors in the Briggs Village neighborhood because their builder stood them up on building the village part of the neighborhood. And so they bought, you know, they bought the houses, they moved into the apartments, they don't have the shops, although there is ice cream and beer. I should say that in fairness. But I think that we, literally, we make the road by walking, by creating a town where people can run errands easily without having to get into their car. And we're bit by bit working towards that.
For me, continuing to invest in public transportation, public transit, infrastructure, all very meaningful ways that we can continue down this road to reduce our dependence on the automobile. The city of Olympia has done a fantastic job over the years and continues to work towards having more bicycle access and more pedestrian access. And I think that work should continue. As we're rethinking and reimagining some of these spaces and commercial centers, we have to make sure that all different sectors are represented. For the seniors living downtown, they could use a pharmacy, they could use access to medical services, and these are areas that we should certainly pursue. My mom lives on the West Side, she's 70 years old, and she's not going to bike her glass down to Yager Park. So I'd love to look at how we can get glass recycling back, or some of the other services that I know are important to Olympians that would allow them to not necessarily have dependence on automobiles.
This issue is very important to me. I had, I was on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee before I was on council. They elected me chair, and then I got on council and I said, you got to find a new chair, right? So one of the things that I think is most important is our standards, right? A city that someone could roll in, someone who's in a wheelchair can get to the things they need, is a city that anyone can get around in. And so for me, bringing things together, as it's been brought up, having small commercial available, services available to people is very important, very key. The other part of this is the infrastructure investment, right? It's having sidewalks where there aren't any. It's having crossings halfway down the block so you can get off the bus and cross the street instead of having to go down here, here, and here, right? The convenience of being able to get around the city by foot or by walling is the most important part of that investment.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's all the time we have for questions this evening. In our remaining time, I will now read you Wendy Carlson's statement. Following that, each of the candidates will give a one-minute closing statement.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Carlson, and I want to begin by offering my sincere apologies for not being able to join you in person tonight. I value the League of Women Voters and the important role this forum plays in helping our community hear directly from candidates. I'm running for Olympia City Council because I believe our city is at a turning point. We face real challenges, especially homelessness and the lack of affordable housing, but I know we can address them with both compassion and accountability. I'll work to expand housing options, strengthen services, and ensure programs are effective. Revitalizing our downtown is another top priority. Olympia's core should be safe, welcoming, and a place where businesses, families, and culture thrive. I'm also committed to responsible budgeting and careful stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Thank you for this opportunity. Learn more at carlsonforcouncil.com. I ask for your vote. Thank you, Wendy, for providing that statement, and now we'll hear from each of our candidates, starting with you, Clark.
Great. Our community, our city, our downtown, they've all seen big innovation progress and growth in recent years. Together, we've imagined a new future, and we're on that road. I've been on the Olympia City Council since 2016, and it's been a blessing to help lead efforts, to establish the fare-free buses, to create dedicated funding to fix our crumbling sidewalks, to push the city to serve unhoused residents, to provide alternative response to people in crisis, and to advocate and support immigrants and refugees arriving in our community. This year, my focus has been on leading an inclusive and transparent budget process in a tough time, as several folks described, that it's not easy decisions, but I'm really confident and pleased with the work we've done and the direction we're heading to keep the doors open, whatever comes from the federal government. So thank you for your support.
No, 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 just wait till the end.
I appreciate the chance to be with you. Thanks again for this opportunity. My name is Justin Stang. I'm running for Olympia City Council, position six. Olympia's been my home for many years, and what I love most about it is the way people come together to solve challenges and celebrate what makes this city so special. I believe that the city council is strongest when it brings a wide ranges of voices and perspectives. It's the kind of collaboration that helps us build trust, tackle issues with creativity, and make sure that our city works for everyone. The priorities I'm focused on come directly from what I hear in our neighborhoods and businesses. We need more housing choices and smart growth. We need to support small businesses, create good local jobs, and invest in lively commercial areas that keep our economy strong. I'll also prioritize public safety and community well-being by using resources wisely for safety, behavioral health, and services that help neighborhoods succeed. I'll work for a responsible, transparent city budget that reflects the priorities of the community. Thanks again for your time and consideration. I ask for your vote.
I believe in the future of this city. I believe in the future of the city because every time I go out and I talk to people and I knock on doors, I ask them, you know, what issues are important to you and how are things going for you in your life? And often, folks, you know, they're concerned about what's going on, and they have issues such as homelessness and housing and affordability. But they also often talk about the things that they love about the city. They talk about the fact that they love arts walks that's going on, the fact that they love our equity work, the fact that they love our climate work, that we're really pushing the boundaries of what a city can do because Olympians have high expectation for what we should do as a city. And so for me, as a council member and as someone who's running for the first time, the issues that are most important to me is affordability so that everyone can be supported by that. It's our equity work. It's our climate work, ensuring that our city is supported for future generations. And it's an accessible city so that anyone can get around in our city regardless of their background, regardless of where they are in their lives.
Thank you. I'm Paul Barant, and it's been an honor to be able to run for the Olympia City Council. I would like to just close by talking about a few things we didn't talk about tonight. I want to see strong EMS services. I want to see renewed strength in our police being able to do downtown patrols of our city, walking patrols. I want to support the clean teams. I want to support our fire department, which is so important, especially for the emergency services that they provide. The number-one issue I hear on the streets, actually, is street speed. I want to slow down the traffic traveling throughout the city because this is the number-one thing I hear at the door. Every fifth house complains about street speed. I want to improve our sidewalks. These are all just meat-and-potato issues that are so important to our community. Thank you for having me this evening.
I love this city so much, and I know that each one of you do as well. And all you have to do is go outside and see our buildings that have wonderful murals painted by the creative and passionate people that live here, breathe in the fresh air that is created through the trees and the water. And I know that we feel such a deep connection to this place, this land, and this city. I'm a working-class state worker. I've been a public servant my entire life. I want to use the skills that I've learned examining complex policy issues to continue to make this city such a wonderful place. I want to make this a just city. That's a city where all of our neighbors feel safe, they feel protected, they feel they can be who they can be by reimagining how we think about public safety as well, focusing on community resource officers who are there to serve our needs. And having a resilient city that protects that fresh air through the way that we design our city, through denser housing, through investments in renewable resources, and partnering with our port to make sure that our water stays clean. Thank you.
We encourage each of you to be a voter in the upcoming election on November 4th. Every vote counts. Ballots will be mailed out next week, and you may register to vote up until Election Day. The League of Women Voters of Thurston County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that encourages all citizens to be informed, active participants in government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Our sincere thanks to TC Media for their partnership in producing this forum and also for the years of collaborating with the League in producing these candidate forums. TC Media is a nonprofit organization dedicated to making media production more accessible in our community. We're grateful also to the Olympia Timberland Library, our host for this series of candidate forums for local offices. Thank you also to the NAACP for their sponsorship as we work toward a community, state, and nation where equity and equality for all become the foundation for a strong, vibrant democracy. Thank you to the candidates for taking time to be here this evening. We believe this promotes a more healthy democracy right here in Thurston County. I also want to thank all of our volunteers. We couldn't have done this without you. And finally, thank all of you for attending, both those of you in person and our online attendees. Have a great rest of your evening.